Good afternoon. Thank you for being here for an early start for our study session. So tonight, we're going to be discussing our financial status projections. It is mid-year and we have taken a deep dive into our finances of budgeting season. We'd like to go ahead and share with you a PowerPoint here in a minute that will walk us through a series of aspects of our financial status and will culminate in us looking at where we need to go next. And that will be a series of decisions that need to be made, a series of communications that need to happen, and also a series of communications that will surely be gathering input as well as giving folks the information that they need further. You certainly will generate questions from this, and I'd like to share that tonight is an introduction to what our financial status is. And we are not coming to you tonight with a plan for remedy of the challenges that we will see in our financial projections. We're coming to inform you and then work together as we move forward with the decisions. I would like to introduce a couple of folks that will be very important to this presentation. Of course, Darlene Appeland, our business manager is here to help with our presentation. And we have invited Jason Rhodes, our ESD Finance Director, to attend tonight. He has been absolutely phenomenal at working with us. I'll tell you the story of how we've come to know Jason so well, and we'll get started with the PowerPoint when you're ready. All right, next slide, please. Okay, our introduction this evening is that earlier this fall, we of course have cash flow projections that come in. And as I was reviewing those, I began to recognize that we were having an impact on our finances. Our enrollment actually increased this year by about 15 students entering the school year. So that was good news. However, when we budgeted this year, we had budgeted for a target that was over what our enrollment actually came in. And so we've been tracking that, of course, month by month. And right now, we're down about 32 students from those budgeted projections. So of course, when you have lower enrollment, your apportionment continues to come in until the true up in January. And so ahead of the true up, I wanted to understand what the impact would be. So in talking with Darlene and making some decisions, I decided to approach Jason Rhodes at the ESD. Because beyond just the simple true up from enrollment, I had been hearing the stories of so many other school districts in Washington State that are having tremendous challenges, and there are three at least right now in binding conditions in our state. So I wanted to ask Jason to do basically an autopsy on our finances to see what our projections would look like so that we had a very sure footing going into budgeting this year. Last year, as you know, we faced cuts and we had tried to anticipate the enrollment that did increase. I will say though, in doing this autopsy, we've realized some things that just need to be shared with you and our staff and the community about the future that we have. I think in Squim, one thing we've done is we look behind us a lot about things that have happened over time. We have got to put our eyes on the future and where things are tracking. That's going to be critical. Secondly, I'd like you to know that when we sensed that something wasn't quite right, we took the reins and did something about it by asking Jason to assist us and looking as deep as possible. I think you'll see tonight and you'll hear from him directly that we're on the right track to be doing this and looking into the future. So we will continue our work with the ESD, but also with some other school districts that have been in the same type of situation, but have come out of it quite strong. So we want to use the examples of success. So cash flow. It's very important to understand in Washington State, apportionment comes in each month from the state unevenly. It also comes in not based on the number of employees that you have to fund. It comes in based on a formula. And the formula in our state, as we know from Day on the Hill, is woefully inadequate compared to the needs that our district has and the number of folks that we do hire to do those jobs. I can assure you, there isn't one person in our school district who doesn't have their day full with their duties. So to expect that we have a formula that does not meet the needs, it's a challenge. Secondly, the analysis. The analysis has gone through a number of aspects, and as we continue to get more questions or to understand certain impacts, we will continue to do different types of analysis so that our projections are as close to accurate as it can be. But tonight, I need to emphasize, our analysis is purely based on what will occur if we do nothing. And of course, that's not how we will move forward. We will absolutely take action, but what you see is just that plain. And then lastly, future options. There are so many decisions to be made in a budget in a year where you aren't challenged. Needless to say, when you are, the decisions become much more difficult. Certainly, people's jobs are at the front of their minds, and we also want to make sure our services are as strong as possible. We have a lot of work to do in our district and we need folks to be able to do that. So we're going to look at every angle here. Also, when you're talking about budgeting, revenue is important. So we've got to think about the way revenue streams are being sought. So I would like you to recognize that what we want is to be on a path to financial stability. I think there's been a reoccurring theme for years in Squim School District about financial instability. It's just common, from what I understand, each year that we talk about what's the financial issue now? We need to get ourselves out of this and pull up by the bootstraps to do it. There are many historical causes to this, but I think from here on out, we need to recognize we've got to make decisions that are going to be forward into the future and think ahead with projections. We're going to look at the whys today, and we'll talk about some potential ideas, but there are no quick fixes, and we don't come to you tonight thinking that we have all the ideas of how to fix this. There are a lot of people in this district with a lot of great minds who will help with that. And I want to talk about the sky is falling mentality. I've heard from staff over and over again, people come to us each year and say, the sky is falling. And then we all try to, you know, tighten our belts, and then it's not as bad as we thought. And I have to give credence to that sentiment. But I assure you that what we're about to show you is very significant, and we'll have to think about how we can get out of this rotation of the sky is falling, and then it's not an issue. We will see some issues tonight. Okay, so I'd like to have Darlene speak to the history that we have here, and what are some of the issues?
Okay, well, up on the screen is a list of items that, things that are increasing in costs, like utilities, insurance that come off our ending fund balance. We're not funded fully for those things. Changes in McCleary was a great big change for us where it did away with the LEAP schedule, and then all of us districts were on our own for negotiating what our salary schedules looked like. SEB went into effect January of 2020. It's a very large cost. It funds the staff that are part of the funding formula, but all additional staff, the district pays for SEB insurance each month. And of course bargaining is in that historical story as well. COVID, I think COVID just maybe delayed what we're talking about tonight. You know, the ESTER dollars helped us keep staff when our enrollment dropped more than 200 FTE when we closed for COVID. And we knew we'd be coming back in a remote, high-rid fashion, and we would need our staff in place. And so ESTER dollars helped us keep some of the staff in place and also helped us with some of the ways that we needed to set up our classrooms in our buildings, our buses, so that staff or students could be safely in the buildings. And then, of course, legal and settlements. And you know, through the years, we've all had, we pay attorney fees, and we've had some settlements along the way. So I did write out a history about over the last five years, and I'll just go through it really quickly. It mostly has to do with what you see up on the board, and that we have a little bit of information. So history of the last five years, in 2018, 19, clear changes were in place at districts, and all the districts were now in charge of creating their own certificate salary schedules as the statewide LEAP schedule no longer exists. And some of the things that we negotiated previously when we had LEAP schedule, that those were no longer what we negotiated. Squim School District receives regionalization, and our regionalization is 6%. And that comes through our state apportionment funding. And then we receive IPD to use for our salaries and increases in our MSOCs. Bargaining is much different plus McCleary, and the salary increases are district decisions and then bring it to the board. And so those are, we've been tracked, we've tracked those through the years. And so IPD is really the percentage that is used when we're in bargaining. There's no COBA any longer. And sort of going forth with regionalization and IPD. Our ending fund balance in the 2017, 18 school year was $1.9 million, and it's risen and fallen over the last six years. And in 2022, 23, any fund balance was at $2.3 million. And so I put that in there just because I wanted, I wanted you to see that over the years, it has, you know, gone up in town. And in the 2019, 20 school year, it brought many changes to our district. We had a new interim superintendent in place, and in March of 2020, everything closed due to COVID. And enrollment for February 2020 was 2,623.21. So in the 2021 school year, we were mostly remote and some hybrid. A new interim superintendent started that winter, and assistant superintendent went out on leave that same winter. Our enrollment for the school year was off target from 2019, 20 February count. It was at 2,406.72 in June 2021. This is a loss of over 200 FTE from the COVID closure to the end of the 2021 school year. 21, 22 school year became more in-person learning with some students learning remotely by choice. We also had a new interim superintendent in place, January of 2022, and actively seeking a permanent superintendent to Squim School District. Enrollment was still off target, and in January 2022, it was at 2,466.97, which is an increase of 60 FTE from the prior year, but still off target from pre-COVID enrollment of over 140 FTE. 2022, 23 school year, Squim brought a new superintendent and new executive director of teaching and learning to our district. Enrollment continues to grow since COVID and up to 2,530.7 by June of 2023. This is an increase of 64 FTE from the previous year, but still off target by 76 pre-COVID. 2023, 24 school year, current year, our enrollment is at 2,575.91, and that was as of January count, which is up 45 FTE from the 22, 23 year end count. Budget enrollment is at 2,613.3, so enrollment is off target by approximately 33 FTE compared to budget. And that's what Superintendent Nichols was speaking to earlier. ESTER funding was put into place to support districts during COVID closure and remote learning models of instruction with intention of bringing everyone back into buildings in a safe manner while COVID mandates were still in place. So much of our ESTER funding supported technology needed for remote learning, PPE equipment, cleaning equipment, supplies, furniture to support distance requirements inside the classroom and for meals and life. And we also had some MOUs in place during COVID, so there was extra pay involved for higher risk exposure. Main COVID points of contact for each building as well as nursing and health staff and support was also supported by ESTER funding. So ESTER One funding, we do not pay for any of our staff except for their extra time. Things that went on green sheets, that was what was paid for with ESTER One. We did not keep our staff in place and pay for them with ESTER One. Current staffing models with falling enrollment numbers were kept in place to support students that had been out of the building for over a year or more, and that was also supported by ESTER funding. So even though our enrollment had fallen more than 200, we knew that when the students came back into the classroom, there would need to be as much support as possible. Seems how the students were at home with parents or by themselves or however they were learning in that time away from the classroom. ESTER funding will be finished, all spent by August 31, 2024, and that's the requirement, and it really is September. But federal fiscal year runs differently than school district fiscal year, so we will be done by August 31 with our ESTER III learning loss dollars. And that is the 20% of the ESTER III funding that's very specific has to do with learning loss. And so those dollars have to be spent in a specific manner. We won't, we won't spend ESTER III learning loss dollars on PP equipment and cleaning supplies, things like that. Let's see here. With the widening gap in state funding for salary benefits and MSOCs, federal funding rules for spending and a cap on local levy funding as a result of the McCleary decision compared to rising costs of material supplies and operating costs as well as salary and benefits rising at a much faster pace than revenues are being received. It's creating need to take a look at our current structure expenditures and make changes to ensure that any fund balance in the future stays within the 4% to 6% board policy guidelines. So we are now in the process of building our budget for the 24, 25 school year. This is the normal time of year where that has started both the salary and benefit side in through human resources and the fiscal budget, my side, looking at enrollment. What's our enrollment look like? We have our enrollment numbers for February. Do we, we can create as many scenarios as we, as we need to, but right now, we are looking seriously at what our enrollment looks like right now and putting those numbers into our F203 so that we can at least see what the funding looks like with the, for staffing model. And go from there, because time is going by very quickly, and we've got certain dates that are required to be met. Our enrollment drives our funding sources, so state, federal, and our levy dollars. It's all driven by our enrollment, so of course, we want to keep our enrollment growing post-COVID and see where it takes us.
Okay, you can see up on the slide there that it shows our precipitous enrollment drop as we came into the COVID times, but us pulling up and out of it. And if we continue with the trajectory, we are hoping to see that we at least plateau, if not continue to increase. And with our discussions that we've had, for instance, around early learning and engaging families as early as possible, I think that is a track toward increased enrollment for us. But I would also say that we have to build a school system that is attractive to people moving into it and wanting to come to Squim. So we want to make sure the resources that we have are competitive. And that includes making sure our staff are taken care of so that they are paid competitively and would wish to stay. Our rates right now of attrition are relatively predictable. We aren't facing significant attrition, and I would say to you, that's because we are competitive in the region. Okay, at this time, I'd like to welcome Jason Rhodes to the podium. And as I said, Jason has worked at the ESD in the finance director position for a short time, but has had extensive experience with school district finance. So Jason, all yours.
Thank you, Superintendent Nichols, and thanks to the board for having me. I was sitting here thinking, you know, I haven't spoken with your board, so if I speak of things that don't make sense, you know, please just stop me and ask questions. Because as I, as I work with different districts, different districts name things just slightly different. So if that's the case, let me know. And in general, if you have any questions as I go through, please, please stop me so I can address it right there. So I did, you know, at the request of Superintendent Nichols, I did some forward cash flow projections. And these are kind of the assumptions that I build the projections with. And I do on purpose, some conservative and some non-conservative with the hopes that in general, they'll kind of balance each other out and be close enough. And when you're talking about a projection going forward, you can never really get to the penny. And, you know, I think about it, you know, Darlene talked a lot about it, all the details, and there's a lot of complexity in school finance that is all very detailed, very process oriented, lots of account codes, lots of dimensions, lots of meanings, lots of fundings that are very particular. And those are all required to be able to do the budget, to be able to do your financial reporting. But when you're doing a forecast, you kind of need to zoom out and kind of look at the, kind of an overall look to be able to look forward in a fast way. I mean, certainly, you could do 40,000 account codes and do, spend a lot of time doing every single thing to the, to the penny. But by the time you got done, your budget year would already be done. So, so, so a couple of conservative things I put in there. And your bargaining agreement for next year is doing the IPD, the implicit price deflator, which is an inflationary index, plus 0.5%. It's not exactly final, but it looks solid, but certain that the IPD for this year will be 3.8%. It might flicker to 3.7 or 3.9, but it's a, it's a give or take, a good number at that point. Your non-federal ESTER revenue, or your non-ESTER federal revenues, I just kind of assumed like, maybe they'll stay constant. You kind of never really know what's going to come out of the federal government, but I've never seen anything like a Title I dollar go down. So, so those are the things, non-conservative, new materials, supplies, and operating costs. I made an assumption, it's almost a wish assumption, that your, your MSOCs will stay at only 3%. And I can tell you, just, just your insurance bill, and your insurance bill actually has gone up, not as much as many others, has gone up every year. I've seen it 10, 15, 25, 35%. And years, it's only 10. I'm like, cool, the insurance bill only went up 10%. But, you know, that's a significant thing. So, so lumping that all together, is that a 3% is a non-conservative assumption. Currently bargain salaries, talked about, your bargaining agreement has, at least for the teachers, a 3.8 plus a 0.5%, but that doesn't account for any, any movement within the salary schedule, increase in experience, increasing years. And it's just a, it's an approximation for the other bargaining units. So on the revenue expense profiles, I went back to the 18, 19 year, and we can look at it on the graph. But 18, 19 was the first quote unquote "normal" year after the, after the McCleary change. It was the first kind of big rise in salaries across K-12. And then, of course, you had 19, 20, which was a partial COVID year, 2021. And so looking at like 18, 19 and your last year for everybody is kind of the quote unquote "normal" years. Neutral, the neutral assumption, it's not done yet in the legislature, and we'll know in another month, but I'm assuming that state revenues are going to go up by 3.8%. And there could be other changes. The projections I did, did include the latest January apportionment, so any adjustments for this year's enrollment, excuse me. And as Superintendent Nichols said, you know, this assumes no external or no internal changes. And everything I'm hearing out of the legislature right now is, don't expect, don't expect a whole lot. And obviously, doing, doing, doing nothing is maybe, maybe not an option when you're looking forward. The other thing I would say about projections is, it's almost like a reverse time machine. And I'm always a big fan of time travel movies, or if you're in the, you're in the future and you go to the past and you talk to your mother or something, and you go back to the future, like, everything's different, right? And so, you know, that, that act of changing in the past is what changes your future. And you know, right now, we're going to project a future, and that would precipitate maybe making some changes now so that future doesn't happen. So I'll take the next slide, Tracy. The other things that are kind of big in these projections are your reduction in ESTER funds. Yeah, last year, you spent about 2.25 million. And this year, you only have a million left. So that's a reduction in revenues of 1.5 million in this current year. And then next year, you'll have no left, so that's another reduction in revenues, obviously with the balance of your other, your other revenues are going up. And so those are the two big things that are happening, and they're happening not just to you, they're happening everywhere. I'll take the next slide. So, like I said, I like to go back to 18, 19, at least for now, to take a look at, you know, how does, how does the current year look to, to current, or back to the 18, 19 year? And these two lines I'm showing on here, the dotted line is the 18, 19 year, and it shows how cash goes, cash balance basically goes through the year. And this profile is very typical of mid to large size districts. It peaks in October and April because you get your levy collection. It goes up in July and August because that's when the state gives you the most money for the school year, which is after the school year. I won't debate why, why that is, but that's just the way it is. And then you have fluctuations through the year. And this is comparing last year, the 22, 23 year to the 18, 19 year. And I look at this and I think to myself, give or take, those are the same. And you see the little two bars on the end of the, the year there in July and August. That represents your, your 4% to 6% fund balance. I mean, it's like, one caveat here, cash balance is not necessarily fund balance, but for school districts, it's essentially fund balance. And in the end, you know, if you have some things in fund balance that is like accounts payable and accounts receivable and other accounting things that are required to be done for your financial statements, they're, they're not super important if you don't have any cash. So, and again, for school districts, they're essentially the same. But anyway, I look at these two years, and I think to myself, give or take, those two years are the same. But if you think about it, your 22, 23 year had a lot less, lot less kids in that year than we talked about. We'd shown that enrollment graph earlier. And the other thing is, in the 22, 23 year, you had $2.5 million of ESTER funds. So while they're, they're the same, they're not actually the same. Next slide, Tracy. So what I did next was looked at what do I think the current year is going to happen to, as compared to last year? The orange line is last year, and again, it, it floats around and ends up in, in where you think the fund balance should be. As of December, the current cash balance was almost a million dollars. And, you know, using the same trends and the same revenues and expenses and averages that you get through the year, that trends, that trends out, and you end up with a fund balance that is less than what your stated minimum fund balance position is for your board policy. I'll pause there for a question if there's any. Okay, next slide. So then I look at everything that I can know or determine about next year. And again, we talked about all these assumptions earlier about state money going up, your bargaining agreement commitments, federal monies, all those things. And that shows And that shows that, you know, basically, hey, in this current year, you've had one point five million dollars less of S R money and your, your expenses are more. Next year you have another one less, another million dollars less of S R money and your expenses are more. Using all the, the trends that puts you in a position at the end of the year that is actually negative. And this is why I actually care about this. When you end the year negative, you, you are my problem. So obviously we want to do some things to make sure that you don't get negative at the end of next year. Um, I'll maybe pause there and see if there's questions or if we want to go back and look at assumptions or.
So what are the, what are the main drivers that take us down into being negative?
And again, it's, it's, well, I do have some slides here pass that we could probably look at those, but it is generally just expenses are up, revenues are down. And
Lots of S R funds.
Lots of S R funds. It's no, it's not really any one thing. Um, you know.
Enrollment on that.
Um, I did not do any specific inputs on enrollment on this.
So did you basically assume same?
It's basically assuming a same enrollment. Um, you know, it looked like your enrollment trends was starting to trend up post-COVID, which is good. But you know, I mean, this year I think the, the enrollment is up ten, which is good, but ten is not a lot of money. So. I think I'll go forward and then if we can go back. Okay, uh, yeah, go ahead. Um, so these are exactly to your, to your question, uh, what are some of the causes? Uh, utilities insurance, this is data put together by one of my colleagues in another E S D that had actually compiled it statewide and sent it to the legislature to, to be acted upon. And she had come up with, you know, statewide utilities insurance is short three hundred twenty-five million dollars. Uh, I think as of this morning, I heard that there was a bill on the floor for about twenty-five million. So that's better than nothing, but it's not three hundred twenty-five million. Um, you, like I said, you're actually in a better position than some, your, 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 your gap in utilities insurance has not risen as fast as many others. And probably because you have good claim history and that type of thing. Uh, but uh, you know, the, the blue line is basically what the state's giving for utilities insurance and the, and the orange line is what you're paying and the projection for this current year. Uh, so that's one element. Uh, and again, there's lots of elements that, that are causing this. Um, in addition to COVID did mask the, you know, the extra COVID money, the extra S R money did kind of mask these effects that we probably would have seen three years ago had this had COVID happened.
So question, uh, so one of the things we learned just recently when we were down at the day on the hill, Chris Reigdall was really like pushing for us to, and we had these conversations about M S O C funding and, and that that could be a budgetary decision where they play. And I know you can't obviously forecast like your assumptions were nothing legislatively, which is absolutely fair. But I'm assuming, what I think that he had said, if we just keep the status quo, it was only going to be like a two percent increase in funding.
Yeah, so the, the governor's, the governor's proposal in the budget, and again, like Superintendent Reigdall has a proposal, um, which may or may not turn into bills sponsored by other legislators. And then the governor has a proposal, which is kind of by default, the default proposal unless other, other people change it. And so in the governor's proposal, the governor's proposal, uh, proposed that the input, the implicit price deflator for salaries, the three point eight percent. And I think only two percent for materials and M S O X. And again, like, if your salaries are going up three point eight percent, it might be reasonable to assume that your utilities bills and your service contracts and everything else might be on up at least three point eight percent. And you know, the implicit price deflator is a, is an inflationary measure, which is the little brother of C P I, Consumer Price Index and C P I is always higher. And to my understanding, C P I doesn't actually always encompass all the things that people see at the pump or the, or they get to the grocery store, right? So it, it doesn't really keep up with real inflation and certainly that hurts employees and businesses and everything else. But, but I think that's what you're referring to as far as the, the current proposal is only two point, two percent. But I, I would suspect and hope that maybe there will be a bill that will amend that. I don't know. Uh, Tracy next slide. Uh, so this is a little bit of an eye chart, um, but uh, kind of a, you know, Darlene went through, uh, and kind of looked at like, okay, what do we get from the state that is funded and what are we spending? In some of the bigger categories and you know, the benefits one, like when I was going into the nineteen twenty year for Seb at North Kitsap, I was looking at the increase in cost is, was it going to be about one point five million dollars for that, that employee set? And I, I'm not saying that Seb is not a good thing for employees because you know, benefits for employees are a good thing. It's just that the way that state has rolled it out, it's not funded for everybody. So. So that's one of the big things, um, but uh, transportation, special ed, uh, all those things cost more than what you're getting. And so it's kind of a, uh, you know, a layout of where, where is all the money coming from? And you know, in general, when, when you have uh, more expenses than you get from the state, that comes out of levy, right? But you'll notice that this number is actually more than your levy. So that means it's coming out of fund balance, which is what you're seeing in last year's ending fund balance.
So this is based on your projection?
Uh, this is based on the data that had Darlene had pulled out of the system and.
Okay, so this is current.
This is, this is current.
Okay. But a year, is that a, it's a full year's worth of, right?
Yes.
And I believe that's just current year, right? Darling, this current year?
Yeah, yes, it's, it's, it's what, um, expenditures have already happened through January. And then everything in December, so always talking about all, all of salary benefit in December of the year. And then, um, and this is all, this is all just basic education. It would be like athletics within there, there's no revenue there that, that all knows. A levy that their salary benefit in.
And, and this is, this is not a different story from many other districts. Most of the classified people are not funded through the prototypical model or through the specialized model or the transportation model. Um, but you need them to operate.
Does this include projected revenue? I mean, is this apples to apples? So is it actual revenue till now or projected?
It takes our portion in, um, dollars.
Okay.
And, um, here.
This is our current situation. Okay, but I'd like to bring your attention to the eight point six million at the bottom. Because our levy will bring us seven point five million. So the differential shows the deficit that we've had to spend out of our fund balance. And there's no way you can go ask for more levy money in a situation like this. You're beholden to what you planned for and we're in the midst of a four-year levy.
Now, and I understand that the S R funds are going to run out at the end of this year. But I, I guess another question, so I'm not wondering if that eight point six, how true that is, does, does this include any S R into the analysis at all?
It does not include any, um, staff member that's being paid for by S R three, four and a half dollars right now. Because we're all taking out, um, uh, the. So I don't think it's rich, it's got a lot of different, um, tabs and. It pulls out all of the, which is important, um, classifieds now. And it's, it's that, it might be coded to I L N or I L two, maybe. Special education. Um, our athletic career today, um, that's pulled out.
So is the revenue again?
Money from our basic education funding.
So the revenue and the expense for those people is not included in here?
Our S R dollars, um, come through unfortunate, we just spend the dollars first and then ask for it in a online plane. This online item anyway, um, so it's completely separate from our B B.
Next slide Tracy. Um, I always like to look at transportation and special education because you're not the only district that this is the case for. And the, the, the trends are very similar in other districts that I've worked in and other districts that I look at. And we already had it on the, the last slide, but I always like to show a graph or a bar graph or something just because it represents a good visual. Um, next slide please. So this is just the table, which looks like some of the formatting is not very good. I apologize for that. Um, but basically what Dar, had Darlene do is go back and look at the eighteen nineteen year. Uh, what do you spend for substitutes, extra time and overtime, um, in both the certificated and classified? And look at the eighteen nineteen year and then look at the twenty-two, twenty-three year because we have ending cost returns for that year. And just kind of look at how much everything has increased over that year. And you know, you could see several, a lot of increases, not, not putting any judgment on what those increases are for because there's, there's many things that have changed and you're not the only school district in this, in this category. It's just, it's just part of the many things that have happened over the time where S R was masking, masking the effects of everything that's been changing. And I assume that we can reformat that table and get that back up to people. Next slide please. Um, post-McLeary, uh, you know, Darlene did mention of like, hey, before McCleary, there was a state salary schedule, at least for teachers. Um, and I would say that that was a pretty low schedule. Um, so certainly the, the changes that have happened have compensated our employees well. But what I'm seeing across the many districts and across the state and hearing from my counterparts is like, everybody's just kind of floating up in salaries. Um, and before bargaining, it was always kind of tied to that state schedule. Um, so it was a change that happened from McCleary that I think the system wasn't, wasn't really watching for or accounting for. Um, and so in the eighteen nineteen year, the average of certificated salaries compared to what was funding being by the state on a kind of F T E level or per F T E level was at that one twenty-five mark. Um, it's risen for you over the years as it has for many other school districts as well.
And to clarify this slide, certificated, it includes both administrators and teachers.
That's correct because the, the data on this two seven five doesn't discriminate between certificated administrators, principals and superintendents and, uh, certificate teachers. But, uh, I would say the, you know, some of the things that I had seen, some of the early post-McLeary, uh, stuff was, uh, you would have a, a teacher bargain and, and you know, some of the teachers would be paid higher than their principals. Not just floated back up into principals and obviously we like good teachers, but we also like good principals. And, and it's hard to, hard to get people to work when you're not paying comparable wages.
Is, is the hundred and twenty-five percent looks like where that starting point is, is that what, is that a hundred and twenty-five percent of what, what the state allocation model was? So did that include that all the try days that districts had or is that not?
No, that's a, no, that, that would be including the try days, right? Yeah. And again, it's, you know, going back to the seventeen eighteen year was the transition year between the cleary. So the, the data just doesn't, doesn't look the same. So it didn't include that. Next slide Tracy. Um, this is a basically your, your staff mix graph. And this looks very, very similar to many others, particularly in the Kitsap and Olympic Peninsula's where a lot of your, your staff is your most experienced, highly tenured staff. And I think that's great and they mostly get paid that, but it just, it's just a fact of, of how your salary distribution goes. Um, next slide.
Can we just talk about the experience factor and us not getting that?
Sure. Okay, so before McCleary, you were paid from the state based on your teacher experience. And it was a giant exercise in making sure that H R had everybody's credits and every, and clock hours and everything into the system. Send it off to the state, get, get the money for those, that experience. McCleary made it so that basically you just get a, an average dollar amount for each certificated, uh, teacher. Um, and it's up to the districts to make sure that they manage the average and, and, and the salary schedule. Um, later, year or two into that, uh, the, you know, there was legislation that said, hey, we, we, you know, we, the state recognized that there, there are more experienced staff out there in districts and that we should make sure that those districts are taken care of. And so at least the current legislation is, it's, it's, it's measured in two ways. It's measured on the, the average tenure, actually, excuse me, the median tenure of your staff, which your staff is around fifteen years and as it compares to the state average tenure, which is around thirteen years. And it also measures the, basically the ratio of master's degrees to bachelor's degrees. And I'm forgetting the numbers, but when I looked at all the state data versus your data, you're just under the, the state average of master's degrees to bachelor's degrees. And so you don't get the experience factor. I think it looked like last year, there was some legislation that didn't appear to pass that would kind of split those out and at least give you some credit for one and not the other.
Instead of four percent, you might think we get what, three and a half percent, but instead we get zero.
Right. And, and you know, and I think that, that effect, that post-McLeary effect of not paying for experience is, is definitely being seen throughout the K twelve system. You know, and the other, the other thing that probably looks problematic is just the regionalization. Um, you guys are six percent regionalization, your neighbor to the east is now twelve percent regionalization, but they were six percent after McCleary. And, and that's just a hard thing when you're, you can, you can work here and live there or vice versa. Um, so that's, that's a hard thing on the transition of, of the borders of the regi- regionalizations. So. If, is there any other kind of questions about the projections or some of the causes? Like I say, I think I assess that there's a lot of causes and and the, the basically the problem is it was, has been masked by S R money, which is not an uncommon problem in school districts these days. Okay. Um, so actions to date, I think Darlene could probably, uh, work, tell you a little bit more about some of the specifics, but I've been working with Darlene a lot to say, make sure that you can, you can code, anything that you can code to S R, you can get there so that you can fully claim your dollars this year. Um, within the guidelines of the S R, you know, grant and the learning loss parameters. My feeling is that you're not having a problem claiming all those dollars. Um, but that's, you know, kind of going back to the details of the nitty gritty of, uh, you know, doing, doing things that need to get done to, to claim the dollars for this year. I don't know that I have anything to add on that. And this is my, where I'd be turning it over to Superintendent Nichols.
So, um, we'll take the time to have your questions about anything that you just saw. But while you're thinking of those, I want you to just think about possible options. And this is the stage that we will now, uh, kick into a different gear to disaggregate what these things could be. So there is a spending frost or freeze. Spending frost or freeze would be something we're considering right now. Okay, so I consider a spending freeze, the emergency breaks. You just slam on the brakes and you say anything that does not need to be spent, um, for our normal operations, we cease. Uh, spending frost, I would say is that we are more judicious. We don't slam on the emergency breaks to that degree. We really work with our, uh, schools and determine what do they see that they need? What could we slow down, spend less than we, we had anticipated, but not necessarily say no to all the additional. I would really like us to be able to work with schools to think about a frost, but a hard frost. Um, hiring frost or freeze, uh, I would say to you that we did have to make some adjustments for the semester. Hiring frost or freeze, uh, I would say to you that we did have to make some adjustments for the semester switch. Today's the first day of the new semester. We did have an issue at the middle school, for instance, where we knew that we were. Um, really looking at significant overage, we felt like we were pressing too hard, we needed to make some. Uh, alleviation for that. But going forward, if we have future needs for staff, we're going to look within ourselves and how we can reorganize. Instead of hiring. Uh, reduction in force scenarios. Reduction in force is something that every school district does not want to be executing. But as we move forward into April, we would have a May deadline around a reduction in force. We want to make sure that we are doing a few things. We're costing out what we need to be saving and the different ways that we could get to that savings. Because a reduction in force should not be your only pathway to success here, but we do have to be real. That personnel is what makes up the lion's share of any school district budget. So we will be looking at that along with other remedies. And then adjustments to bargaining agreements, uh, those would be requests for reopeners to discuss aspects of the contracts. Things that are attributes in a contract that costs something, we could discuss what those are. Um, we are scheduled to pay I P D plus a half percent for teacher contract, for instance. Do we need to talk about what degree of increase would happen next? Or are there other remedies that we need to look at across all of our um bargaining agreements? Now bargaining agreements that are solidified are solidified, so requesting a reopener is simply that, it's a request with rationale. So we'll be thinking about what we need to do in those avenues to have those conversations. Uh, I think we would all agree, there's a shared interest in our district that we have financial stability. Because financial stability will keep us being able to grow enrollment, have the programs we need and hopefully stay competitive. Um, for our employees.
There is one more slide.
Okay, I wanted to speak about segregated spending and. For instance, we have construction happening right outside our doors here. And some people might look at that and think, why would you be spending on something like construction when you are also speaking that we have budgetary concerns? We are going to be seeing new school buses because of the transportation uh capital fund. These types of expenditures do not come out of our regular budget. They are in different types of capital um. Funds and also grant funds are coming from the federal government, for instance, and are earmarked for certain expenditures, so you are not only required to spend. In those avenues, you end up sometimes with higher funding that you need to spend on something particular. I'm thinking of high poverty lap funds that come to certain schools, we have to expend those. And so we might look at having that uh pot of funding continue to hire tutors, for instance. Okay, and then we have the categorical funds such as C T E, when those funds come in, they're earmarked for a particular expenditure. We wouldn't necessarily see that there'd be a reduction in those areas. So it is very important that we communicate where we do have these categorical fund expenditures. And where it is a budget expenditure we'd need to review.
I think that's it.
Okay. Okay, um, we're happy to take any questions. Or go back to any slides that you'd like to discuss.
What's the process from here in terms of deciding which ways you might want to go on some of these things?
So what's going to be very important next is that we have uh meetings with groups that we know have vested interest in this. And that we know we need to communicate with, so we will be reaching out to each of our associations to go over this. Um, PowerPoint in detail with them, uh, take questions that they may have. We also will be making sure we're talking with our uh full staff. And uh getting questions and answers in that way. And then we're going to have to start making decisions about the degree of the problem. So to give you a sense of the degree of the problem, you heard that we had a million dollar deficit from what our levy is able to cover. Right? And then you heard that we have a million dollar Esser uh reduction that will happen going into next year. And you saw on the graph that there's two hundred and ninety thousand dollar projected deficit in two thousand twenty-five at the end of that year. So when I add that all up, uh, two point three million dollar um issue to get ourselves back in a position. Of a four percent fund balance, and that's at the minimum range of what we expect in this district. I know that you would prefer to see it closer to six. So to tackle something that is that size of a problem, we're really going to have to think about things like programs. What is going to be uh valued here? What degree of staffing we can continue to um forward? What degree of administrative or support services can occur in this district? And I want to say that there are other districts that have certainly come before us uh having these issues. And they have had some very interesting means to communicate with our community. To survey and see what um folks have of interest to retain in their districts and what are their priorities? So um we'll be discussing all of those avenues.
Could you maybe, Jason or Regan, I I know that sometimes there's discussion in the community about. You know, why would you have a four percent fund balance? Why would you have this money just sitting there when you could be spending it on the kids? And I I think it's really important for us to communicate to the community what the importance of that fund balance is. And I was hoping maybe you could.
Sure.
Help elaborate on that a little bit.
Tracy's gonna bring up a graph for the first page where we compared the eighteen nineteen to the twenty twenty-two. Cash balance, please. Let's put Tracy on the spot. I'll I'll speak about some of the traditional ones. Uh, it it's always spoken about like, hey, we need a fun balance at the end of the year. To make sure that, you know, if enrollment doesn't show up next year as we project, you have a little bit of buffer, right? That that's thing one, and that's traditionally spoken of. I think uh the other, the other thing that is traditionally spoken of is like, well, we need that fun balance, you know, in case we have any big expenditures that I could. We need to replace an HVAC, we need to replace a roof or something like that. But you see how the 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 balance goes up and down over the over the year? You also need the fund balance at the end of the year so that. February, March and June are not negative, even if you had a balanced budget for the entire year. If you start at, say, around a three percent budget, you could you could have June at negative, which is a cash flow problem. Um, and you know, as as your fund balance is going down, that's that's a problem, but even if you have a. You know, you have a balanced budget through the whole year and you're just starting with a low dollar amount, that that fluctuation can. Make it difficult for Darlene to manage paying and and you know, so. Uh, everything I'm hearing on the street, you know, that that February, March and June of twenty twenty-five is going to be hard for a lot of people. Um, but you know, if it were to be hard for. Say both, and I'm not saying this is a thing, but you know, say both Port Angeles and Scrim School District had a problem. Clallam County might not have enough cash to cover you for that. So so those are the other things that 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 a fun balance is good for, and and just looking at this problem as I've seen it about, if you. If you're starting with like less than a three percent fund balance, that could be putting that June, that June number in. In in playing, so it's it's more of a uh kind of a cash flow management, and I actually. I went to a conference in November, nationwide conference, and I was talking to somebody from Texas. And just due to their rules and their laws and their levy collection, their spikes are much bigger. And they 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 target a thirty percent fund balance because they need that to get through the cash flow swings of their collections. And their their levy, their levy payments, so. So while I don't like how lumpy the 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 cash flow is. I I'm glad we don't have a thirty percent problem.
I'd like to add something also, you know, we've entered the world of funding so many aspects of school through competitive grants. But grants are often modeled as reimbursement. So you have to have the cash to front what you want to do and then ask for reimbursement. And when you're looking for grants that are in excess of a million dollars, which is actually common, you can find that type of a grant. Or even more, you've got to have the cash to be able to front the project and then wait for the reimbursement, which can take months. So it's it's quite challenging. I also would say it doesn't happen often, so I wouldn't want to overstate it. But you can have a district emergency, you have a boiler blow, you have some other catastrophe that hits your school. Like, God forbid, an earthquake of some magnitude that we could actually withstand. We would need to have a a fun balance so that we could respond, so it is important.
And I think it's important for people to understand too, I mean, in some ways you can just analogize it to a family budget, right, that. It's not responsible to have no savings because things happen, but the difference is we can't run a line of credit. If we do have something like that happen to us, we can't borrow the money to until we do the repairs, right?
Uh, you 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 do have non-voted debt authority.
For emergencies?
For sure, and there's even state emergency grants.
Oh, okay.
But, you know, I mean, your your non-voted debt authority is is fairly low, I mean, it would probably be plenty, plenty adequate to. Cover an HVAC or a roof or something of that nature, but.
But you don't want to be.
But yeah.
Living that close to the edge.
I mean, but if you're gonna go out and take non-voted debt, then you'll eventually have payments and you also have an interest on those payments.
Right. Thank you.
I just have an observation, just thinking about this earlier, Regan, you were talking about how. We need to build enrollment and have Squim, the Squim School District as a place, as a destination school, really. For families and build that over time, and I think the big challenge here will be to. Uh, be true to that vision at the same time, we have to have a hard frost and. I mean, I'm up for a challenge, but I think this is going to be really, really hard.
Yeah, I I've always been concerned about the fund balance, minimum fund balance, not. By more concerned than other board members, and I'm always asking about. And you know, I guess one thing I'm concerned about or uncomfortable about is we always seem to wait till the end of the year to see how much we have left. Is there another way to do that, where like you said, Texas, they want thirty percent upfront, more or less?
Go to the next slide, Tracy. Um, so the method that I did this to project your year-end fund balance, I just took. You know, what is your kind of your average percent of revenues in a month over the year and your average percent of expenditure, so. This is done, and I did this in my district, and it obviously doesn't match up exactly, but it's fairly close. Um, so I can work with Darlene to see if she can do.
What about looking at last year's budget, um, minimum total budget and saying, okay, five percent of that upfront? And then we're gonna deal with the rest of the money will be divvied out as we normally do, but that five percent. Is there and it stays there in in the budget, we don't tap.
Yeah, and so sir, what I think you're probably that saying then is you want the bottom part of that cash flow. Or that cash balance to be no less than four percent.
Right.
And.
Period.
And and.
Not not maybe.
That's a, that's a board decision for sure. Um, you know. The way that fund balances are typically talked about in a meaning in in kind of a not a meaningful way, but. Where it means the most is at the end of the year, when you close all your books and do, you know, you're closing your books and starting the next year. You need that fund balance, certainly no less than three percent to be able to withstand the cash flow problems. And then anything above that is up to your all discretion. How much do you want to carry as a buffer against unexpected enrollment? Unexpected expenses.
But you're, what you're saying is here, at at some point here in the near future. Will be, we won't be at three percent, we'll be at less than.
So yeah, my expectation of this year is you're gonna be less than four percent, right, at the end of this year.
And in the future.
And then at the end of next year, Tracy, next slide, please. At the end of next year, your cash will be negative if nothing is done.
Right, and and if that's a bad thing.
Yes, because when your, when your cash is negative, um, what happens is. You would have to go to the state and ask for basically a loan. Uh, because at this point, when your cash is negative and continues to go down, Clallam County is not going to give you a loan. Uh, whatever whatever local bank is not going to give you a loan.
Yeah, we are at where we're over time when we need to start our.
Okay, well, I have a question, you know, but. Yeah, we seem, we seem to have a problem meeting our minimum fund balance, and what can we do differently to make sure we're there? From a financially conservative way.
Yeah, I'd say at this point, uh, need to look at ways to reduce expenses.
Thank you.
We're gonna um, we're gonna go ahead and um recess the study session, I'm gonna give us five minutes to. Until we start the regular um board.